All right, with that, I am going to call the meeting to order and this is the regular council meeting for Minutrista, October 19th. Our first order, I'd like to ask that you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, welcome, and I see we have some students from West Tonka High School, seniors, I believe you said, so, welcome, and you'll find this very interesting, I promise. So, first order, I'd like to make some introductions. I am the Mayor, Lisa Whalen. Next to me is council members Patricia Thole, Mark Vanderlinde, Pam Mortenson, Bob Christians, and on the end, we have our city engineer, Paul Hornby. To my right, your left, is our city administrator, Mike Barone, our finance director, Brian Grimm, community development director, David Abel, our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven, Ron Beatty, and then our chief of police, Paul Falls. We also have Chris McKenzie, thank you, with S E H tonight in the audience, and he'll be doing a presentation later on, on the agenda. So first order, is there any additions or to the agenda? Otherwise, a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Did you, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Next, we have special presentations, actually, we have none tonight, and then persons to be heard, we have none tonight either. So we move on to our consent agenda items, and that's approve our work session meeting minutes and joint city council planning commission meeting minutes from October 5th. Then we have approval of our regular meeting minutes from October 5th. A resolution approving claims, and approve, and then number D is approve Henepin County user agreement for their pictometry software system, and E is a resolution to approve not to waive municipal tort liability monetary limits. I'd like to remove number B, and that's approve the regular meeting minutes from October 5th. Otherwise, it would be consent agenda A, C, D, and E. Any other removals? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda A, C, D, and E?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made by Ms. Thole and signed by Ms. Mortenson to approve consent agenda items A, C, D, and E. Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. I just wanted to pull the meeting minutes because when we had our budget discussion, I just wanted it on the record that Ms. Mortenson had some questions regarding the CIP, had questioned the $25,000 in furniture. I think because it was a budget discussion, that that should be part of the record.
Make that correction there.
Thank you. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Otherwise, with that correction, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, tie, all right, and the winner calls to Patricia Thole. So we have a motion by Mr. Vanderlinde, seconded by Ms. Thole, to approve the minutes from October 5th with that correction. So we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our business items. And this is approving plans and specifications and authorizing advertisement for bids for water treatment system improvement project, city project number 2015. Is that Mr. Hornby first?
Correct. In your packet is a memo and resolution approving the plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement for bids for the 2016 water main improvement project. The plans are nearly complete, there are a few minor details that the S E H is still working on, but staff recommends council approve the resolution approving plans and specification, and also authorizing plans, or authorizing the advertisement for bids. There is a draft of the ad for bid in the packet as well, also the title sheet and the location plan for the project. If you want more in-depth look at plans, there are some plans around City Hall, there's one sitting on my desk here, as well.
And did, did you want to add anything, Mr. McKenzie?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Chris McKenzie, S E H, if available for any questions, I think Mr. Hornby summed it up pretty well.
Okay, a couple of questions, so, the actual, the actual route, if you will, has not been identified, it's just kind of the approximate.
Corridor.
Corridor. The corridor has been identified, but not the actual location, is that correct?
The location is very good, with a few minor details to be worked on.
Okay, 'cause I know we met last week with some property owners, and we're still working on that.
Right.
Segment of it.
Right.
So the rest of the segments are all good to go?
That's right.
Great, okay, and we're making progress on that last little segment?
Yes, we are.
Okay, do you have a timeframe when that would occur?
Well, just to make my correction, we're identifying the corridor, we haven't secured all the right-of-way et cetera, so.
Okay.
Yes and no on your question there.
If it actually comes down to it in the plans, when we're preparing the plans, we can continue, even if the project is bid, we can still continue to negotiate with the property owners.
That's correct.
Okay.
They will just restrict the contractor from working in that area until that's resolved.
Okay, but do we have a timeframe as to when all that would be resolved?
We don't.
Okay.
I can't tell you that it's gonna, I don't know how long it's gonna take. I don't anticipate that it's gonna take a very long time, but we actually have a meeting tomorrow to discuss this, so.
Okay.
And we'll know probably after tomorrow, and can report back to the council on the 2nd of November as to where we are with particular properties.
And there are only three properties that are needed permanent easements, or three owners that are needed permanent easements from, the rest are temporary write-of-entries that.
Correct.
Are intended to make life easier for the contractor and provide for a better, a better project and a better bid for the city.
Right, and we did have an open house, and invited all of those along the corridor.
That's right.
And, and we had quite a few people here, do, do we know how many came?
I think I counted about two dozen to thirty people, twenty-five, thirty people that were there.
Okay, so, people are aware of this, and I know you'll work, continue to work with them for.
People are aware, I've talked to probably three-quarters of the people on the corridor already, most are in favor of the project, including those who the project would be looking for temporary rates of entry from.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments?
Well, the reason we're doing this now is to kind of keep, keep on the timeline that we gave to the council months ago, so, by doing this authorization, authorization tonight, we can stay on that timeline, as Mr. Hornby just mentioned, continue to work with individual property owners on whatever we need to do, so.
Okay.
Yeah, this allows us to, to bring to the council on December 7th, the consideration of awarding the contract to the contractor.
Correct.
Okay.
Allowing them time to get materials ordered, their ducks in a row, if you will, such that if we can have everything in place in 2016, as early as February possibly, they can start.
Is it more advantageous to do this installation in the winter?
For a lot of the corridor, it is, yes.
Okay, okay, so we want to make sure that we're on a, on the right timeline?
Right.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, that's a, that's a very good point you raise, Mr. Barone mentioned that the staff's meeting tomorrow to talk about next steps and where we're at with right-of-way acquisition, and we'll, we'll know more and be able to report more at the next council meeting, but just keep in mind, there may be other tools the city may have to explore as a backup in order to keep the timeline going, so just keep that in the back of your mind as, as negotiations go forward, and we can present more at the next council meeting.
I, yeah, we're aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So we'll look forward to that update, anything else? Otherwise, I am looking for a motion to approve the plans and specification, authorize advertisement for bids for the 2016 water system improvement project.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion? I just want to say we're excited about this, so keep on, and stay on task, on schedule. So, with that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. Thank you very much, and we'll look forward to another visit, I believe, then on the 2nd.
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Next, we have a resolution for extension of our seasonal employment for T. Barrett as our Public Works meet with Public Works as maintenance.
This will be my item, Mayor. Mayor, council, what you have before you is an extension of seasonal employment for Trevor Barrett. Trevor has been a many-year seasonal employee, under our labor contract with Local 49. Seasonal employees are limited on the number of days that they can work, and he has reached the, his limit, and so what we've done here is to structure a memorandum of understanding with the full support of the leadership at the, of the Local 49 International Union of Operating Engineers, both the business agent and the shop steward are in agreement with this. The reason for it is we've got two full-time employees that are currently on an extended leave of absence, and we're actually still working on dealing with that particular issue, that's a separate issue, but for the purposes of tonight's discussion, extending Mr. Barrett's employment with this memorandum of understanding would help ease the burden of the workload that's currently going on in Public Works. Not everyone here will recall it, I did try to mention it to the two new council members that began in January of this year, and reminded the mayor of this as well, but a few years ago, we had one of our, who is now a current full-time employee, Nick Redkey, we did the same situation, we had an HR issue with one of our employees that ended up having his employment terminated, and we had a need to have an extension of, at that time, Nick's seasonal employment, and it worked out quite well, to have him here during those, the summer, it was actually a fall-winter kind of thing for Mr. Redkey, and it worked out for both, both parties, it worked out for the city, it worked to have that extra headcount, it also worked out for Nick to be able to have, have the job, and the, and the union was just fine with it. It wasn't intended to, to work out this way, but one way to kind of describe this is it would be kind of an extended internship, so to speak. A number of cities in, in different fields, including public safety, they'll have seasonal jobs for people, and it gives, gives the cities, in our case, a chance to look at how well they work, and as I mentioned to a couple of the council members today, if you asked any of our full-time employees about Mr. Barrett's ability and his job performance, they'd all, they'd be telling you that he's been doing an excellent job, and so, we're excited to be able to kind of have him tide, tide us over here for this, this get through the winter season. He does not have a CDL, he's actually working on getting that, they would break him in slowly, if at all, on the heavy equipment, but he'll be able to help us in a number of other ways with snow removal and things like that, just gives us another warm body here for that, and it's very labor-intensive, some of the snow removal and other things that they do, so, so we see this as a temporary but good solution.
If we, if we do this, then, and in March, he leaves, should an opportunity not continue, then are we on the hook for unemployment?
I don't believe so, Mayor, this is just an extension of his seasonal employment.
Okay.
Generally, seasonal employees are not eligible for unemployment insurance.
Mike, how many hours has he got in so far this year? Do you know roughly?
Uh, well, Mayor, council member, Christians, it's essentially, it's not counted by hours, it's counted by days of work, and if you work ten minutes, it counts as a day of work.
Really?
Yeah, so, he's at 120 days, that's essentially six months of employment.
Okay.
That's a limit for this kind of job, so to go beyond that, you would have to do something like this, or, or say you're done with your seasonal position, so.
Otherwise, if I recall, wouldn't it be, if you continue unless you had some kind of a special agreement, he would then be considered a full-time employee, once you have so many, right?
That is correct, that's correct.
And with that, of course, comes the benefits and all the things that come with it.
Absolutely, and we're trying to avoid that.
How are you doing that? How are you avoiding it?
What he would just be getting paid is his seasonal break right now.
So as a subcontractor?
Nope, he's not a subcontractor, he's an employee of the city, he would just be a seasonal employee according to the terms and conditions of this agreement, this memorandum of understanding.
And everybody's in agreement with that, that works?
In the union.
That's awesome.
Yep.
All right, good.
So.
Good.
Everybody's happy with it.
As you know, we're short-staffed in Public Works, and with the winter season coming on, it's kind of critical that we get, get more bodies.
I was just concerned that if you get to a point where you're forced, and.
Right.
Because you exceed this amount of hours.
Right.
By the union contract and so forth, you ought to benefit to become a full-time employee, which then involves benefits, and are we ready for that at this point?
Right.
So, what you've done is good.
Yeah, there's, there's not really any way to gain this by saying, okay, lay him off for two weeks or a month and then bring him back, 'cause there's, you can't do it, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I do need a motion to pass the resolution for extension of the seasonal employment for.
Trevor Barrett.
Trevor, yeah, I keep on, just call him Terry, Trevor Barrett.
So.
So moved.
So.
So moved by Ms. Mortenson, and seconded.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Christians, and seconded by Ms. Mortenson, is that how it goes?
No.
All right, all right. Any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Next, we have our budget discussion, I think it's just on there because.
Because.
Because I asked it to be on there.
Be honest with you.
The reason, the reason is because there was a lot of absenteeism last week, and so I just wanted to be sure.
There was.
If there was anything else that we need to put on to discuss about the budget, does, I'm assuming you're gonna bring something back at our next council meeting?
Yeah, I'll start, and then I'll let Brian jump in, since he knows what he's about to say, but, last week was a tough week for staff, Mr. Grimm was on vacation all week, I was off the last three days of the week, 'cause my daughter got married on Saturday, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, it was a wonderful day. So, there wasn't really any particular work done on the budget, essentially as promised earlier in the year, but what we're at right now is, we did hear what council had to say on some potential options for the budget, we'll be working on those, we'll be bringing those back, maybe with some options on, on different things for you to look at based on your direction to us, and we should have that at the November 2 meeting, it's just, the way it was last week, there was just nothing done on the budget last week, so, I don't know if Mr. Grimm would want to chime in and give many other comments on that.
I think Mr. Barone summed it up pretty well, I was down with Mickey Mouse and the family in Florida, so, must see how, can show some pictures of that, I don't know. But, um, no, I, I guess the, the understanding I had from the last meeting is we were gonna bring back to that November 2 meeting, I know we had a pretty good discussion at that first meeting in October as far as some options, um, doing a bit larger bonding package for a few street projects in 2017, which could help bring the levy down to closer to 5 percent, you know, we talked about the drug task force officer, maybe a mid-year hire or something that can bring it closer to four, so, I mean, there were some different things that the council seemed to have consensus, or at least discussions on, but I can bring back some more exact numbers to that November 2 meeting.
I think we'd want to see that.
And then, Steve, the general, or, go ahead.
My question here, and this kind of pertains to what Ms. Councilmember Mortenson had said, is, we have a rather large certificate equipment that we're looking at.
Oh, certificate, yep.
And so, the, the question, in the following year, from the, if my memory serves me correctly, on the schedule, it was significantly less, so.
The CIP you're talking about?
Yeah, the CIP, so the question is, do we want to spread that out more, or because of the cost of floating that certificate, is it better to do more at once, or to spread it out? I mean, that, those would be some of my questions, because I know we talked about maybe reducing that CIP number by something, we weren't sure what, so can you look at that and bring it back?
Sure.
Bring us back some options or some information on that?
Yeah, and I guess I didn't remember, I mean, I think as staff, we tried to smooth it out pretty good as far as the five-year CIP plan, but maybe if it dips down some in 2017, whether there's some shifting, if we do an equipment certificate, I think we have $90,000 a year for basically five years.
Right.
You know, so even if you take off $25,000, that really gets spread over five years, so you're looking at, you know, a five or so thousand dollar.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, is it would have to be significantly more.
Yeah, it would have to be, I think we talked about it at the last meeting, it'd almost have to be, you know, a big piece of Public Works equipment, which I know, you know, Gary's been, some of those things have been put off a few years already, or a couple, few years, so, it just, it's sort of a cost benefit of potentially waiting another year operationally, you know, and Public Works and Police, and they, they need their equipment to do their jobs, so it gets to be a.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, it would have to all be looked at to make sure.
We can certainly look at it, Mayor, but as Mr. Grimm has been touching on here, you know, we've had the, the budget history up until last year, you know, we had three years of decreases and two flat years, so a lot of stuff got deferred, so.
Right, so we're kind of making up for that.
So, yeah, the 2016 may be kind of a make-up for that, to delay it a year would be great financially, but may not be the right thing to do to, to keep our operations going, so we did defer a number of things, but we, we'll, we'll look at it, so.
And the other piece that I'll, I think we're gonna, gonna talk about more at the work session, our special meeting, is the, the enterprise funds will want to start talking about the water, sewer, and stormwater, so there'll be, you know, both at the work session and the regular meeting, there'll be budget discussions on that November 2, 'cause we'll have more information as far as, we'll have the bids on the water treatment plants from the end of October, so.
Right.
We'll have a lot of.
October 27th.
Yeah, a lot of relevant information to go over and update and discuss with the council, so.
Okay.
So that's what we said, you know, we're trying to take a meeting off and talk in budget, right, for our own sanity.
Okay, all right, then, enough, enough. Any other comments or questions?
Just a quick comment as far as the equipment component of the budget for 2016, you know, we want to be mindful of how we're spending that money, but I would hate to delay the purchase of a new piece of equipment if it's needed, if then we're in the end gonna end up having to repair the current piece of equipment that we have in 2016.
Yeah.
Put bad money there and then just have to pay it again to purchase the new piece.
We don't want to be a penny wise and a pound foolish.
Yeah, exactly, and if, and if with the bonds, or bond, if we're able to get to that, to do some of those roads that, that we could now do sooner than later, you know, that would bring down the original preliminary levy amount, which then maybe that would leave a little wiggle room to get the piece of equipment as it was proposed or scheduled originally by the staff, so I think that would be a, a good thing to be mindful of when we're looking at those dollars and where that percentage is gonna come in based on the bond.
The equipment was, yeah, but the equipment was coming from the equipment certificate, so it's, it's a different, different way of funding it.
Okay.
So, so the only way to get less, to, how do you say, reduce the budget in that regard is to eliminate some of the equipment, so you have a smaller equipment certificate, you can only use equipment certificates for equipment, that's the only thing you can use them for, you can't use them for general funding, okay, so, like a truck purchase, or a car purchase, or furniture purchases, they're, they're specifically only for that.
But I thought you were saying, I thought from what you were saying by delaying it, then that would be lessening the burden of the taxes for 2016.
Yeah, you'd have to, I think, and that's why.
So, that's conflicts, I think, with.
I think what he's gonna, what Brian would have to look at, there's a cost to float that bond, so then, does it make sense to do a larger bond now, and not, you know, because if you do small, 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 it might cost us more in the long run, so if he can look at that, and then also, like you said, if there is equipment that's absolutely necessary, we, we, we have to get it, like you said, sooner than later, rather than put bad, good money into something old.
I'm assuming what you're trying to do is wrap two years into one bond.
Not necessarily, I, we'd have to pull up the equipment.
I think it's two different items, almost, on, on the street projects, I think we're trying to do that, we're trying to wrap.
Right, you can't do that.
You know, so as far as, we'd have to, you know, we talked about it at the last meeting, potentially doing Grandview, Halsted, and Enchanted all in 2017, like, you know, so, instead of taking, taking one from 16, one from 17, one from 18, wrapping them into one bond and doing them in one construction season, that frees up some potential levy dollar amounts in 2016, you know, to, to reduce this year's levy, and then move some projects up, you know, it's just sort of tries to get some economies of scale by doing it on one bond issue. The, the other piece we're talking about is the equipment certificates, which, that's sort of a different issue, I mean, if you need 500,000 or 400,000 worth of equipment in a certain year, without taking out some big pieces of equipment or something, you're really not gonna have a whole lot of impact.
Right.
To that issue, so it's the two different items, and I think what maybe everyone was trying to talk about is by doing those road projects in 2017, there might be a little more flexibility to do, purchase more of that equipment in 2016, even it's all a, a balloon or a push-pull, I guess, on the, you know, balancing act, so.
Right.
I think it's just finding that right.
Like you say, there, there are two separate bonds, you can't mix on whatever.
I just meant the equipment, is try and roll two years into one bond, instead of having two separate bonds. As far, or.
You know.
Oh.
If you need a truck this year and you need one next year, instead of floating two bonds.
Oh, sure, yeah, 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 yeah.
You float one for both, both trucks, or.
Correct.
Or whatever.
Yes, yeah, and I think we have roughly about 450,000 worth of equipment next year, so that's where that, or 425, or whatever it is, so that's where that 90,000 a year amount would come in to, to do it over five years, so, and usually, as long as, from what I've been told by the bond council and, and our financial advisor, as long as you're issuing more than about a quarter million, 300,000, it makes it worth, if, once you're going below that, it doesn't make sense to issue a bond, 'cause the bond issuance costs, you know, it just isn't as feasible, it doesn't make so much sense, so, but yeah, we can, staff can bring back a couple, few different options, I think the general consensus of the last meeting was to try to have that levy increase, the 7.4, I think we heard, was, what, let's work to get that down, whether the 4% to 5% range seemed a lot more palatable than 7.4, and that's, I think we've got a couple different options to be in that area, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we won't belabor that anymore, since you want to have a, a meeting off, and we'll bring it back at our next meeting. So next, we have our administrative and staff reports.
I've got two items, Mayor. Just wanted to mention that what you did not see on tonight's council meeting was a contract for our website, we're in the process of working with our potential vendor, and you will see that on the November 2 city council meeting for approval. We weren't able to get all the ducks in a row, I guess for lack of a better phrase, to have that for you tonight, but we will in, on the next council meeting. And then, just another item, final item, is just an FYI, we actually began labor negotiations with the 49ers, our Public Works group, we started on the 28th of September, and we listened to their desires for their contract that they would like to get, and we, on Wednesday, we'll be meeting with the personnel committee to kind of discuss their, what they're asking for, and kind of discuss what we're going to present to them as what we'd like to see in a contract, and that next labor negotiation meeting with the union representatives will be this Thursday, and I'll keep you posted on future things as the, as they happen.
Thank you. Looking forward to the website.
Yes, I am too.
Anybody else, staff over here, David, none, Chief, anything? You're moving along with the Police Academy?
We are, Madam Mayor, we've had, we've held four sessions, so tomorrow night, our correction, Wednesday night will be our fifth session, that's gonna be a tour of the Henepin County Dispatch facility, which is new.
Okay, yep, implement?
Implement.
Yep.
So, and then our final night will be SWAT operations and a few other equipment-related items, so.
Okay.
It's been a huge success, people seem to be very interested, and, and interestingly enough, people don't seem to be too concerned that we're going over the time limit, it ends at nine o'clock, but there's still questions, and people want to hang around and, and learn more, so it's been very well received.
All right, good, and there's 16 or 18?
Yes, this year we have 16 people signed up.
All right, great, nice to hear that. And then, Mr. Hornby.
Mayor, members of the council, I did hand down, just a handout, that's the park in James Cole, we were, we've been talking about the pond, making that a Nert Pond, and also maybe sizing it to be, to, to meet a 100-year event. The Red Contours is a concept of what that pond would look like to meet the 100-year storm runoff event. You can see it, there's quite a bit of impact to the, as, as it's laid out to the park. That doesn't necessarily need to be the configuration, but I handed it out to give you an idea of the size of the pond would need to be, and that is to the new hydraulic curves that, that, that everybody's going to know with the increased rain event. The increase, the increase in the runoff that we've had from the recent rain events, so, these are the curves that most agencies are gonna be, if they haven't approved, they will be approving them. So, the pond is larger than it would have been, say, two years ago, we sized the same pond.
Why is it larger?
The, the runoff curves, the hydrology for the rain events have, have been modified.
Increased, okay, okay.
And they've been doing that because over the last several years, we've experienced much greater runoff from these storm events, so...
Um, so in, this is the only configuration, 'cause this even impacts the little picnic area?
This isn't, this isn't the only configuration, I just had them restrain it to the, um, area the city owns.
Okay.
So, I wanted to give you an idea of what the impact of the size of that pond would need to be. Two, twofold, one is the, the bigger area that's just open with no contours in it. That's actually, that would be the storage basin, so that would provide the NERC benefit.
Uh-huh.
The other area to the outer edges of the red contours provides live storage to a one-hundred-year storm event. The one thing I do need to point out, though, is that even if you do hit, if you have a storm greater than the one-hundred-year event, there's not an overland overflow for this pond.
There is none?
There is not.
So, then where does it go?
It continues to go north, and it could, uh, you know, if you get, you know, a hundred-year storm is one that's designed, is anything greater than that is generally a catastrophic event. So, this, this pond as shown here would be, um, one that would reduce the risk to the structure.
Okay. What do you need from us this evening?
Well, just, I wanted to show it to you, to see if you wanted me to continue moving forward with the cost-benefit analysis and so forth with this. And as, or if you'd like, I could just bring a, a formal memo to you at the November meeting, just to show you what the impacts would be with this, approximate cost of the pond, the, uh, the environmental, uh, benefit to it, and the cost associated with it, and whether it's, um, from that standpoint, a, a good cost-benefit value.
And then, would you, I mean, because this is a neighborhood park, and it would impact this, um, sport court there, would you possibly like, before we start this, do a neighborhood meeting or something?
Oh, I would think you would do that, yes.
I don't thi...
I don't think, I don't think there'd be a lot of people within the neighborhood, from what I understand. Uh, that court gets used quite a bit. Um, there's not a lot of options, other than, uh, going onto private property.
Um, also, do you know how many pounds of phosphorus this could potentially reduce?
Uh, don't quote me on this, but it's probably around fourteen, fifteen pounds.
Okay, and can we get credit for that, then?
We, we are required by our, um, by permit to reduce that for Janes Cove and, or Janes Bay, and, um, this would certainly be...
Do you know what our total is for Janes Bay?
I have to go back and look at that, but I can bring that back in a formal memo. I'll just spell it out in a minute.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested to find out what that is. Um, I think you should bring it back in form of a memo, so that we have all the details in front of us. I mean, if the council's prepared to make a decision tonight, I'm not.
I was, I was not asking for you to do that, I just wanted to give you an idea of what this could look like.
Would you be able and are willing to, and I, I know the homeowner affected us here this evening? Um, 'cause I, I mean, if the sport court is affected, that's one thing, but I think we'd want to keep that picnic area and the playground outside of the, the work zone, so maybe you'd have to work with the property owner to make a configuration that would...
This is just a concept level, so this can be changed, this is just, I just wanted to show the impact of it and to, and to provide an estimate to do the work, so... I think this will be conservative enough to just show you what the cost would be to do this, and then also to, um, provide a cost-benefit analysis and a environmental analysis area.
Okay.
Paul, can you clarify something for me here, on the red lines that are going back here, exceeding over the tennis court? Is that what your meaning here is to increase the size of the pond?
Correct, correct, that would be the outside.
That would be the outside, and you're saying by doing this, it would be a hundred-year storm plan?
Correct.
Okay, and that you feel pretty confident about, and of course, if it gets worse than that, you're right, I agree, it'd be a catastrophe. So, the blue lines, what, what does that represent?
Those are, those are just the existing contours, the blue ones, and we just highlighted those so you could, they'd show up better. Uh, the engineer that's working on it just identified what elevations all those contours are at, so...
And the other question I have, then, if you went and did this whole thing here, and drew this out where the red is, uh, what, approximately, what would the depth of them be? How deep would that be?
Well, it's nine sixty-five, that's what I was gonna ask, is that the bottom?
How deep that would be, how the pond itself would be?
Well, it would be the difference between nine sixty-five and...
It's about eleven feet to the bottom.
And nine seventy-six.
Actually, to the bottom, to the center, it's probably gonna be more like twelve feet.
Okay.
So, if that was absolutely full to that top, that top red line, the water would be about twelve feet deep.
Would we have any liability on that? Drowning liabilities?
You actually have these ponds surrounding, this is, this is a design standard that's required, um, to provide this type of, one method that's required to, uh, provide water quality treatment.
But increasing to the size like that, wouldn't be, it wouldn't be necessary to put a fence around it, we wouldn't be exposed to liabilities?
Well, I haven't seen the design, but, I mean, you always run the risk of liabilities, but I think as Paul is saying, if you design it in a standardized way and, uh, do it according to specs, certainly cut down any kind of, uh, potential liability.
I think the issue might be more because this is immediately adjacent to a playground, whereas I don't know that we have a lot of NERC ponds immediate, this close to playgrounds, so we might have to look at that.
And we're talking twelve feet deep, I mean, I...
But it's not gonna have, do you know what the drain, do you know what the drain down is, or what the drawdown is, hour or days, or...
Uh, well, it's actually, it's, it's quicker than you might think on the live storage portion of it. Um, I don't have that wrapped up, I don't have the model with me, I just have this, uh, some basic facts about it, so...
But we, we may have to think about fencing, especially around the...
Around the park.
Around the park area, whatever, but, yeah.
The one thing you don't want to do is to fence the whole pond.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that, yeah.
Just maybe along the length of the ponds, which you're seeing the border with the park, for the playground.
Okay, so you'll bring that back?
Yeah, I intend to bring that back to the first meeting of November.
Okay, and then the other question I have, this is not pertaining to this, but, um, you know, we're, we're thinking about, um, the Enchanted Lane. Once we kind of have an idea as to what timeframe that will occur in, then I would highly recommend that we have another neighborhood meeting to let the residents know what the plan is. Because I think they're all thinking it's gonna happen sooner than later, and me, and I don't want any false expectations.
Sure, we could do that, if you want to have a meeting, we could certainly do that, or if you'd like, we could do by memo, um, it's up to you on how you want to have it.
Okay, but some way we need to communicate that with the residents, whether it's neighborhood meeting again, um, once we know when it's gonna occur and how the financing is gonna work and all of that, so, okay. Any other questions of Paul? Okay, then we move on to, um, council reports. Um, so yes, we are gonna meet Wednesday to talk about the, um, uh, Public Works Union Contract. And, uh, we had the pleasure of last Wednesday, let's see, not this, not this past Wednesday, the Wednesday before, um, doing the lieutenant interviews, um, Ms. Thole, myself, Mr. Grimm, Mr. Abel, Mr. Barone, Mr. Fals, and also, um, Chief Farniac from Orno, um, we were all here and interviewed. And we came up with a candidate, and we're going through that process, and we should have that, um, before you at our November second meeting and have him onboard, so that's, that's exciting. Um, I will be attending the planning commission meeting this, um, this month, and it's, um, the fourth Monday. That's next Monday.
This week.
Okay, I hope I can make it. And then, uh, let's see, Northwest Hennepin Leaf, I was at that on Wednesday, and that was very interesting. Uh, we had a lady by the name of Deb Taylor, and I already gave this information to our communications coordinator, Cassandra. Uh, she is the CEO for the Senior Community Services of Hennepin County. And it's very interesting, you might think, well, you know, you don't need senior services yet. We, hopefully, we don't need them yet, but the thing is, is, um, even if you have elderly parents, you might be, uh, better informed, knowing what kind of services are out there for them. And if you are a senior, then you can, um, tap into their vast, um, resources. And you don't, and it's not necessarily for just, uh, people that are, are low-income or anything like that, it's anybody that, that needs some kind of service. And so, uh, they have a, a website that Cassandra said that they will, she'll put that on our new website. She can't now, because we don't have the capacity, but, um, once it's up and running, she, then we'll also have a link. But they have different things, they have, uh, Medicare health insurance counseling, they have senior partners' care. In other words, if you need somebody to come in and, and help you with something, they can help coordinate that. They also give, um, outreach and caregiver services, connecting you to resources that keep seniors independent and help seniors stay in their homes longer. Uh, if you want to stay in your home and you need somebody to come and help mow the lawn or rake the leaves, they can help put you into contact with people that can help you do this. So, it's very interesting, um, it's called, uh, Senior Community Services, and they do have a website. And I'm gonna pass this information on to our staff, and hopefully, um, they can get that on our website once it's up and running. And then, um...
Good question, do they work with the Gillespie Center at all?
They're there a lot, and, um, the Gillespie Center is in close contact with them. So, if people don't remember their name, they can call the Gillespie Center, and they would be able to contact. But they can also call our staff here, now that they have the information, they'll be able to give them the information, so... Um, and then, uh, let's see, League of Minnesota Cities, um, that's all I can think of right now. Oh, Mount Fire Advisory, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Barone and I attended that, I was a little bit late due to some issues, but anyway. Uh, so now the Fire Advisory Committee did authorize, or did recommend to the City Council of Mound to go ahead with the ladder truck purchase, and so they're gonna get that order in now, even though it's next year's, uh, budget. But by the time they have to pay for it, it'll be next year, and it's a long time coming. Their current ladder truck is eighty...
Uh, it's beyond...
It's eighty-one, I think it is, so...
I think it's a, uh, I think it's nineteen eighty or eighty-one.
Eighty-one.
It's long beyond its expectancy.
So...
It's due.
Yeah, and they're, it's not, it's maybe just gonna go to the recycle, but, or maybe to a museum. So, it's a long time coming, and then we also went over the whole CIP, um, chart and everything.
I think we ended up at three, what was the rate again, the increase, I, I have it down, I written down, I think.
It's under two...
Under two percent.
Yeah.
Two point, it was under, oh, one point eight, I remember, one point eight.
For the total, for the total, so that's, yeah, they're doing a great job over there, and kudos to them. I mean, just, they do a great job, the Fire Department, so, just like our Police Department do, does a great job, too, so... I know it's challenging at times. Um, that's it for me. Ms. Thole?
Um, as the mayor mentioned, uh, we'll be meeting regarding the Public Works Union Contract. Uh, we conducted the lieutenant interviews, um, so that's in process. Um, I also attended the Parks Commission meeting last week, and the, uh, pretty exciting, over in Waconia, they broke ground for the new school, they're the new elementary school. I believe it's gonna be called Lakeside Elementary, so that was pretty exciting for them, need to be a, a part of that groundbreaking. And, um, I think the rest of you probably received this postcard as well, Metro meeting for, that the League of Minnesota Cities is putting on on November eighteenth. Um, so I, uh, plan on attending that, but need to register yet, so...
Okay, good, yeah, I'll probably attend to it.
And if anybody from the council's interested, just give, uh, me the information, the form, yeah, we'll get you registered on.
Yeah, it's, they always do such great, um, workshops and, and seminars, and a great, another great networking opportunity to get to know other people and find out what they're doing in their communities, too, so that we can bring good ideas back for our community.
When is that?
November eighteenth, it's a Wednesday, yeah, in Bloomington, not closer than some other...
Across Lake.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Good, thanks.
I have none.
Um, just, if we could add on the agenda, the Pioneer Serpique, um, update, what we're gonna do, because it is close to the year end, and I think we should probably make a decision on what we're gonna do with that.
Well, I think we gave staff direction, and they were checking into our other option.
Okay.
So, maybe if you can bring that back, thank you for reminding us.
Uh, thank you for going to the meeting, coming up in October. Patricia's gonna do the planning commission meeting in November, and I will do a few as well.
I don't know that there is one in December, so you're off the hook.
That's a good one to pick, then.
Yeah, yeah.
I will then take January.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
I absolutely have nothing, other than the fact I would like to thank you for knowing now that for the next, from one week, from October twenty-sixth to the following Friday, I'll have to drive by here twice a day to get to work, because County Road forty-four will be closed from the twenty-sixth of October until Friday, the, whatever date that is.
Thirty, thirty.
Thirty, so thank you for that information. I've had numerous people ask me what's going on in the city with that, and it's, it's not our road.
It's a county.
It's not our road, but anyway, uh, it will be closed for one week.
And isn't that whole distance?
Yeah, I guess so.
I wondered if it's a...
The call or work they're doing is by Redland's house, Terry Redland's house, the old Terry Redland house.
It's closing between Harts Gravel and Loring.
Okay.
Right, that's, so you, residents, you, you, you'd have to head south to...
Right.
If you're on Loring, you'll have to head south to Seven, or if you're north of that, you'll have to head on to one ten.
Just like when the trees washed out.
Correct, exactly like that.
Other than that, I, I have nothing.
Yeah, and that's kind of information that we would be able to post on our website, too, in the future, so...
Yeah, I mean, that affects a lot of people.
Yeah, it does, absolutely, I think, um, hi, isn't Highway three ninety-four also gonna be closed? Anyway, we have to check into that, all right? Yeah, it's not in our cities, so, all right. Any, I don't believe we have anything else on the agenda, so we can sit here if you'd like. I make a motion to adjourn? Motion has been made to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, thank you very much.